Thank you, thank you all for coming and we will go ahead and call the special meeting of City Council to order. I have an agenda here somewhere.
Councilman Harhay?
Yes.
All right, first item of business then will be public comment. Public comment is limited to five minutes for each person and must pertain to an item on the agenda. Is there anyone wishing to speak in public comment? Please state your name for the record.
Yes, good afternoon, Fred Volz for the record. Three things I'd like to bring up about the PowerPoint we're about to hear regarding the refinance issue. The first is that nowhere in the spreadsheets that were included has there been any statement of how the net present value discounted cash flow was calculated. In other words, what percentage rate was used and why? And I would hope that that question would be answered in the discussion that goes along with the PowerPoint. Secondly, there were no scenarios included that showed a use of excess funds at varying levels for faster payoff of the principal amount if that money is available somewhere in the city. And it would be nice to see the what ifs for that at varying levels that would reduce the interest expense to the city further. And finally, beyond the consulting job that Zion's Public Finance has done in this particular case, it would be helpful to know if Zion's Public Finance has a pecuniary interest in potentially restructuring and selling more rather than less B.C. debt. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in public comment? All right, we'll close public comment then and move to the presentation from Zion's Public Finance.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Andrew Artusa. I'm with Zion Public Finance. I'm the managing director. I'm here to present to you the refunding opportunity that the city has available to it in connection with its 2006 utility revenue bonds. On the first slide, we just talk about our firm, just give you an overview of who we are. We are registered municipal advisors that work exclusively with municipalities in the state of Nevada. Our role is to provide the city with advice regarding the structure and the sale of debt. And our overall goal is to have you achieve the lowest interest rate possible on your debt. And unlike underwriters, we have a fiduciary responsibility to the city. We are not purchasing this bond for our portfolio. We are not bond buyers. We are here simply as an advisor to help you get the best rates. So we will competitively bid this to the entire market that's interested in the purchase of municipal securities. And then really overall is to make, our role is help staff and limit the amount of burden that is on staff time in connection with the bond financing. Just to disclose that Zion's Public Finance is owned, is a wholly owned subsidiary of Zion's Corporation. And just so everyone knows that Zion's Bank Corporation also owns Nevada. I'm also here today with my colleague, Mark Vincent. He's here and he'll be working on this engagement as well. We're here talking about the 2019 ballot question that was approved by the voters that allowed for the city to proceed with a refunding of their debt obligation. Right now, the city does have a bond issue. It's their 2006 utility revenue bond, which is currently eligible for refinancing for debt service savings. That bond issue currently has an amount outstanding of $24,955,000. Just wanted to give you an overview of why municipalities choose to refinance. There are typically three reasons why. The first and the most important reason would be to lower your interest cost, just like you would have your home mortgage if you were able to refinance at a lower rate to have a lower payment. You would take advantage of that opportunity and that's what the city was going to do with this particular bond issue. However, there are also times where there are onerous bond covenants that municipalities can no longer comply with. And so, not only for interest rate savings, they would want to refinance, but they would refinance to get rid of those covenants. And then another reason would be, and this happened a lot during the economic downturn, where municipalities would restructure their debt in order to better align the resources they had as far as revenues to what they were paying on their obligations. So, the other two reasons, two reasons are not why we're here today. We're only here today for the reason of refinancing solely for interest rate savings. Just to give you an overview of how this 2006 utility bond came to be, the city issued, oh, sorry about that. The city issued 32, approximately 30, almost 33 million in 1999 for S&amp;W water projects. In 2006, the obligation was refinanced in the amount of $33,545,000. Currently outstanding, as like I mentioned, is $24,955,000. And total interest payments on the current outstanding debt, about 8.7 million. And that current debt expires in September of 2035. So, using estimated interest rates based in the current market, the city can save as much as 1.7 million by refinancing the existing 2006 bonds over their remaining terms through June of 2036. In this scenario, we would keep the term of the bonds to be as long as they're currently outstanding and without changing the term. The other option would be to reduce the term of the bonds, to shorten them by four years. And this, this results in interest rate savings, however, the bonds are paid off earlier. So I'm going to present those two scenarios. This is the first scenario, which shows, you'll see here, the current, the blue bars show that the 2006 existing debt service. And then you'll see, in the orange, the 2019 proposed refunding, you'll see that there is an orange column and a blue column in every single fiscal year. And that results in, you'll see that the orange is less than the blue in every single year. This results in present value savings of 1.7 million dollars. I'm sorry, debt service saving 1.7 million dollars. The resulting PV savings is 7.6 percent. And the rate that we use to answer the question is the estimated bond yield on the refunded bonds is the yield that we use to come up with the present value savings. And then I just need to look it up for this scenario. And for the scenario that we're looking for, for the, where we keep the term of the bonds the same, we use a discount rate of 2.04 percent. And then for the other scenario, which I'll present next, we used a rate of 1.98 percent. But the convention is to use the bond yield on the bonds that we're being, that are the refunding bonds to get that discount rate. Under the next scenario that we're presenting, this results in debt service savings of 2.5 million or present value savings of 8.5 percent. So there is, over the life of the issue, increased savings. But you'll see that the payments are slightly higher in the earlier years and then they decline starting in 2032. And then there'll be no payments in 2033 through 2036 fiscal years. So this scenario, this is based on estimated interest rates. We think that the actual savings will be better than this. And so, there may not be a situation where the debt service payments are slightly higher. The payments in this scenario result in about $100,000 more than you're currently paying over those through 2031. However, the fund in which these are paid from has the ability to support that additional payment because it is not very significant. But it also benefits in the fact where we get to retire this obligation sooner and save more money. So, from the recommendation that we are presenting today, we would prefer, we like this option, but both options result in savings and we're comfortable with either option. The other, the other aspect of this is that the city had a 2010 advisory ballot question, which basically said that any sale proceeds from the Boulder Creek Golf Course would be used to, first, 10 percent would be allocated to public safety capital improvements and the remaining 90 percent would be reused to retire capital obligations. So what we're going to do with this particular bond issue, should we move forward with the refinancing, is request that the bonds be callable to give the city the flexibility to reduce the bond par and the amount that's being borrowed at any time during the life of the bond issue. Typically, a municipal bond is sold with a 10-year call date, which allows you to redeem the bonds over that, in year 10. However, you can actually request a shorter call date. It does cost slightly more, but in this case, it'll be worth it because you'll be able to retire the bonds quicker should you have available proceeds. So, like I was saying, we will structure this particular bond issue if we move forward to have this flexibility. And that's all I had. I just was wondering if anyone had any questions for me.
Any questions from City Council members?
Yeah, I have one question that came up for me the other day. And that is, for year one, 2020, why does it show only a payment of $500,000? Where, what is that based on?
It's just a partial year because we're going to be probably not issuing this until later in this calendar year. And so, won't have a full fiscal, we're short, you are going to have made payments underneath the old obligation, so we're not.
Okay, so this is just, now, is this 500,000 in addition to the payment? Or would that be the only payment for that year?
That would be the only payment on the new bond. If you had made prior payments on the old bond, those are not reflected in this analysis. Only payments of bonds that have not been paid by the time this has been, the refunding has been implemented.
Okay, so if the first bond, if half of the bond was paid in the first half of the year and then this bond became the new bond?
Right.
That would be in additional, that would be the payment, the 500,000?
Right. And our goal is to keep that payment still, even though you made a payment earlier in the year, to keep that payment to be less than what you were paying prior.
Okay.
And if, you know, in the other scenario, it might be slightly higher just because we're shortening the term up.
Thank you.
So I have a couple of questions too. Is, I just want to clarify that this, for the record, that this doesn't require any additional property taxes. This is just straight using what bonds we had currently and we're just replacing those with a lower interest rate.
Correct.
Okay. And then, in this scenario, what is the difference between scenario one and two with how much we're paying per year?
So under, so on scenario, I have scenario two, hold on. So, under scenario one, which is where we keep the term the same, you're getting about $100,000 a year. And these are all estimated based on interest current rate estimates. But it's about $100,000 less a year over, through fiscal year 2036.
Okay. So scenario one, that I understand, is 100,000 less than the current, but the scenario two will be about 100,000 more?
Yeah, it's about 90,000 more through fiscal year 2031. And then, starting in fiscal year 2032, it would go down about 67,000. And then, starting in fiscal years 33 through 36, it would go down about 860,000 a year.
Okay. And then, what, when you said that this could be called early, or that you put in a provision that it could be called early?
Yes.
So, that would give, what, that would end us about two years earlier if we went with option two, right? Correct?
It's going to be, you'd pay it off four years earlier under option two. But that doesn't include any additional cash. That's just assuming we keep everything the same right now.
But if we, if we had that provision in, it would allow us to pay in before the 10 years was up? So that was only a two-year difference between?
Oh.
What you're, could you just say I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yes. And so, you were saying if we did?
If we just paid it normally?
Normally, yes. So, I think what you're saying is that typically we'd have a 10-year call. So if we don't do a 10-year call and we redeem it early, what would that look like? We would probably keep the term to be the same, shorter term. However, we'd make the maturity amount slightly different in each fiscal year. And, and so, we'll probably not know exactly how much a city has available from these land sales to pay this off until after these bonds are sold. So one of the things that we would do as your advisor would advise you on which bonds have the highest interest cost to pay off first so that we lower the overall interest cost on the obligation. So we'd have to look at, at the time that you actually said, hey, we have extra money, you know, how should we apply this to best benefit the city? And then we would advise you on that.
Okay.
So right now, I don't know.
So you won't know that?
No. Because I don't know what the rates are. Because the way the municipal bonds work is that it's typically, it's the yield curve typically rises over time. So the back end maturities will have a higher rate, but you won't know that till you sell. I've had transactions where an investor will put a lower rate on the back end and, you know, higher rates on the front end, just depending on how they want to structure the transaction for their, for their investors.
Okay. Because there was a, there was a fee associated with that. Do you know what approximately that would be to have an early call?
Well, the early call would only be in the years that you would do it. So anything from year 10 forward might have a slightly higher interest rate. It could be, depending on the year, as high as 25 basis points, but your, the cost of that additional call varies based on the market at the time. Or if we sell this as a bank loan, depending if we get interest from banks, they don't require a prepayment penalty at all, or even if you do, banks typically let you have more flexibility. And so you might not have a penalty. But if we did a publicly offered transaction, the penalty would only be on bonds in years one through 10. And it would vary based on which maturity within there. And it would not be as significant enough to make you say, no, we're not going to, you know, because you're going to use this cash to redeem it early, so it'd be worth it overall.
Okay.
It's not significant.
Okay. Those were my questions. Thank you.
Okay, so, just to clarify here, we're talking about refinancing the raw waterline bond that we have. Is that correct? So, the funds are coming out of the utility funds?
That is correct.
So, you mentioned, we're talking about, you know, either do we want to potentially pay more, pay $100,000 more per year out of those utility funds? Or do we want to maybe pay $100,000 less per year?
Correct.
In the end, we'll save a little bit more. I just want to clarify that. Would there be any reason, you know, there's a lot of chatter that goes on about town. Would there be any reason ever to not want to refinance in this situation?
No. No, this is an excellent opportunity that currently the market is, interest rates are very, very low, as you all know, just watching your own personal finances. It's a perfect time to take advantage of the interest rate market. And it also, overall, the savings look very, very good. Typically, a local government will not look at refinancing an obligation unless the PV savings is greater than 3 percent. And this particular, depending on the scenario, it's between 7 and 9 percent. So you're more than double the standard threshold, which you would even start to look at a refunding. So definitely a really excellent time to take advantage of this opportunity.
Okay, and then, not so much questions, but more so, just kind of commenting, just on my thoughts initially. Obviously, you know, saving 2.5 million sounds a lot better than saving 1.7 million. But when I, what I hear from people and I talk to some people around town, you know, there is just concern where, you know, right now, people feel certainly burdened with, you know, what they're paying in utilities and whether, you know, this would actually have any real impact. You know, there is certainly a concern that if we're going to be putting even just a little bit more additional burden up front to maybe get some, or to actually get that payoff, you know, down the line, you know, I think people start to feel that pressure. And I think what they're really, what they're really looking for here is a win. And I think, I think either scenario is a win-win for us. But I certainly, you know, we talk often about, you know, there's issues about where, what are the utility rates going to be? What, you know, we're going to be underdoing, going to be getting those answers back here? What are going to be the demands of those utility funds? And without having all of those answers right now, I would think that saving a little bit money now so that we have that money up front would, to me, make a little bit more sense than starting to pay off it, even trying to pay it off sooner and putting that, a little bit more of that burden. So that's just some comments of mine. So, I thought I would make that, say that out loud.
Councilman Harhay, did you have any comments or questions?
The fees and costs, all in, what would be the differential between the two? The early pay or the late pay? Would there be any difference in the upfront fees that we'd have to pay to set it up?
No, the term of the bonds won't have any impact on the cost or the fees that you'll be paying on the particular bond issue in either, either scenario, sorry.
And the fees typically are running a point, is that correct?
It should be less. I'm, you know, I don't, we haven't gotten those, we haven't gotten that far as far as what the fees are going to be. However, there'd be a point or less, I would say. Worst case, a point.
All right.
Any other questions, Councilman Harhay?
No, not for now.
Thank you.
And just to clarify, the reason we don't know is because we're going to be bidding this out. All aspects of the engagement, including underwriter fees, bond council fees, will all be bid out as part of this service. So we just don't know at this particular time because we haven't gotten to that point. But a point is a good threshold.
And if you could clarify, I mean, you just touched on it there a little bit. If we are to go with you as the fiduciary on this, what is your role in this process?
So our role is to hold the city's hand through this entire process, to help negotiate the best terms possible in order for you all to receive the lowest interest rate on this obligation that's available in the market at the time of sale.
And with your fiduciary responsibility, you're neither obligated nor prohibited from Zion National Bank being a bidder on this?
We are, because we are, have a fiduciary responsibility to the city, Zion's Bank is not allowed to bid on this obligation.
Okay, so as far as your services go, that would be part of this potentially up to one point of charges. But Zion National Bank would not be in a position to benefit beyond that, is that correct?
That is correct. They are not allowed to bid on this.
All right. Couple of things that this brings up. One of the large ones is the potential for the sale of land that 90 percent of that revenue is to go towards paying off debt. Do we have a schedule on, on when that potential sale or when that land is going to be offered for sale again?
The process is happening right now. I believe they've put the information, there's been advertisements, I think, run on that? Not here. But I believe that we've, we've already started that process and some advertisements, I think, are in the preparation of being prepared or have been prepared and, and put out on this.
Thank you. My concern is that we're looking at structuring this sale or potential sale, buying back our existing bonds, selling new bonds. And yet, there's a potential that we have a significant amount of money that could come into play here where we could pay off the bonds that we currently have. I believe those are now callable. In other words, we can pay those off now.
That's correct.
Required to pay off all of the debt, we can pay off a portion of that debt, is that correct?
That's correct. But however, there were debt, that does remain, will be at the higher interest rate. And if we do the refinancing, you'll have a lower interest rate that you'll be paying and you'll still have the flexibility to repay it when those proceeds come in.
That's if we potentially assume a higher interest rate by making the bonds callable from the time that they're sold.
That's correct. I mean, but the interest rate is still going to be significantly lower than what you're paying now on your current obligation.
Okay, do you have any estimate of the difference between whether there was, say, a 10-year call versus an immediate call?
How would you say 25 basis points, which is still significantly lower than what you're paying now? So, just say, right now, we're looking at a 2 percent rate, it would be 2.25. And on the current debt, you're paying 4.29.
Okay. Again, my curiosity is that if we were to split this debt into two bond sales with one or five-year, 10-year call date on those bonds and another where the bonds were callable from the outset, you know, how much money would we save at that quarter point on, say, financing of, you know, 18 million dollars?
Yeah, and if you split it up, you'll also pay additional issuance costs on having two separate series. It's cheaper to do one, one bond issue for the whole thing. But like, like I said, if we do this as a bank loan, if we get bank interest, you might not have any penalty for prepayments. So I think as we move forward in the process, we can come report back the different options that are available. But it's so young in the process that we don't know the answer.
Okay. And do we have yet an appraisal on that land and how much land is up for sale?
I don't believe we have that information yet. I think that's in the process of being gathered.
Okay. Again, I just see that as having a significant impact on the decisions that we're supposed to make, how to go about doing this financing. If we have a significant sum of money out there that may come in, I believe we just sold, was it another nine acres of land to Storybook Development? And that resulted in a $3 million revenue?
Yes.
Increase? So, 45 acres of land, that could be a significant amount of money towards this debt.
Yes, and so as that process moves along, this bond issuance process is going to take several months to complete. This, this item here before you today is to start the process. You will also be having the bond ordinance come back to the city for approval. So it'll be back before you. And then at that time, we'll have a better sense of who's going to be interested in and can provide you with additional information regarding if there are any land sales, what the, if, you know, what that, what those scenarios look like. If we add 5 million, how much less would it be? If we have to pay a certain amount more for an interest cost, we can come back to you at that point in time. But because we haven't been given the go-ahead to move forward, we don't know the answers. But this is not, meaning that we're not, this is not going to come back before you. It will come back before you, probably another two times before it's finalized.
And, and that's my concern as well, that we don't know all the answers yet either or what the best approach might be on this. So it gets, when you start talking about this amount of money, things on the potential answers become significant on, you know, where are we in other processes that are going to impact this particular decision to be made? Couple of other questions. What is the outlook for interest rates over the next six-month period of time and the next 12-month period of time? You're supposed to predict that for us.
Yeah.
Accurately.
Yes, yes, I wish I could do that. Unfortunately, I cannot predict interest rates in the future. However, I can tell you that interest rates today, when we ran these scenarios like a month or so ago, they were low. We thought they were low then, they're even lower now. I do think that there's a potential for them to go slightly lower. But because this is going to take some time to get authorized and moved through, I don't know where they're going to be. I mean, I would just be guessing. Based on the current environment, it's an excellent time to take advantage of it. But, you know, we do have an election year coming up next year, presidential election. And so I think there's a lot of things. and so I think there's a lot of things that can come into play, a lot of uncertainty in the global trade market, there's also the uncertainty in England with the Brexit. So all of that makes investors want to fly to high-rated investments like treasuries, which is causing interest rates to go lower. So where is that, where we take, the missile market's able to take advantage of that. So, you know, I think that, to the extent that there is market, uncertainty in certain markets, even globally, then rates will probably be lower, if not lower, going forward. But like I said, I don't know.
And if we were to authorize you to go further with the process at this time, what sort of timeline would there be, if everything were a yes from this point, to get this bond sale to actually occur?
We can, we would close this transaction prior to December 1st, a couple of months.
All right. Just for clarification, I know that this may not be something that you can answer. This debt, you know, there's, you noted in there that the initial debt was 1999, and then there was a refinance done in 2006. My recollection is the purpose of that refinancing was to, quote, "pay off the charge" for what's known as the third straw. So this debt encompasses both the third straw and the raw, with the debt for the third straw having been paid off at the time of the refinancing? No?
I don't know the answer.
At that time? Okay, so that was just a separate debt that has been paid off, has been paid, and just for clarification, this is the only debt outstanding for the city of Boulder City at this time?
That's correct.
You're paying for the third debt through the infrastructure surcharge that's currently included in the water bill?
Well, I think that's in addition to the 4 million that SNWA charged Boulder City when the project was initiated.
Correct.
Okay, so we just never stopped paying for that. And just to kind of follow up on what Councilman Adams had said, because of the restructuring that's occurred within the utility fund, we are now charging nearly $40 a month out of the water fund to each property, each person who has a hookup to the water system. And I believe that's been an increase of, I don't know, 400% over the past four years now on that service charge for the water. It had been formerly less than $10 a month, and now it's $37.50 a month.
Is this on? Oh, there you go. Yeah, Mayor, that currently the service, water service meter charge is $37.56. That includes the SNWA surcharge, as well as a component of this debt service on top of the administrative charges of the overall utility itself. So that's how that number is, what that number is comprised of.
Okay. And one last question. Previously, there had been an authorization, I believe, to take 1.5 million a year out of the capital improvement fund, the general fund, to pay off the debt?
The voters approved that, right, that we could do that? Is that what, are you talking about the fact that if the city, if the utilities couldn't make the debt service payment, we could take money out of the voter-approved capital fund to pay that debt? I believe that was a voter ballot question back in 2010, was that?
The voters approved accelerated payment to pay off the debt service on the wa, the raw water line early, so it was an additional $750,000, I believe, I can look it up, a year, to accelerate the payments on the debt, once the bonds became callable in 2016.
And have we been doing that then?
No.
Okay. And was there an end date on that, do you recall, Madam City Clerk? Okay, so it was just open-ended to continue to withdraw money from the general fund capital improvement fund?
It was, it wasn't, the capital improvement fund is its own separate fund that has to be voter-approved. It's not general fund or utility fund, it's the capital improvement fund.
Well, I think we treat, we have some portion of the utility fund that we considered a capital improvement for utilities, but...
That's not the same thing, though.
Right.
Right, well, that's what I'm getting at, is they're not the same thing, but...
The capital...
That's why I'm trying to be specific, that it's the general fund that the funds come from.
No.
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 Okay.
The capital improvement fund can be used for whatever the voters approve it for. And so it's not general fund, and it's not utility fund. The utility fund has its own capital account, the general fund has its own capital account. This is something completely separate. So the $750,000 for the accelerated payment was in an effort to reduce the term of the bonds, because by applying that $750,000 every year, it would cut the term by seven years.
Okay, and that's just never been done. The bonds became callable just in what year?
Right after I got here, okay. I thought it was 18.
Yeah, I thought it was 2016 as well.
Maybe it is 16.
2016.
Okay. And the amount of revenue that flows into the capital improvement fund, 20% of the land lease money goes to that fund? Do you know what the overall amount going into that fund is?
On the yearly basis, I believe, 8 million? Two and a half, two and a half million.
Okay. All right, that's all the questions I have. Mr. City Manager?
Mayor and Council, I'd like to ask a couple of questions, just for clarification and for the public's information. So if you could please, Mr. Artusa, explain public bonds versus private placement, so that we have a thorough understanding. And if you could emphasize costs associated with, you know, that a municipality incurs that they go public bond versus private placement, specifically as it relate to interest payments, issuance, the cost of issuance of that particular item, and then also the flexibility of terms such as prepayment penalty, acceleration penalties, you know, whatever those terms are.
Sure. So a publicly offered bond means that the city would put together an offering memorandum similar to a 10K if you were doing a stock offering, where we talk about all the attributes associated with the security of the bonds, which would be the utility fund. We would send that doc, we'd prepare that document, you'd have to hire a disclosure council to prepare that document, so there's a legal fee associated with that. That document is then sent out to all the banks and investment banks that are interested in purchasing municipal debt, and they were given an opportunity to place a bid on those bonds on a given pricing date. The other thing with that particular publicly offered issuance is required to go to the rating agencies, where you get the bonds rated, so investors know how your bonds compare to other bonds, which helps them come up with an interest rate when they put their bid in. All of those things have costs associated with them. There's a cost associated with disclosure council to prepare that document, there's also the cost associated with going to the rating agencies, and there's also a cost associated with the purchaser, who will be charging an underwriting fee, and that fee is not something that we know at the time, it's based on however they bid the deal. So all three of those fees are incorporated in a public sale. The benefits of a public sale are the fact that you're able to take advantage of the yield curve, and so your shorter maturities pay a lower interest rate than your longer maturities, and that's typical. I mean, the yield curve is that way, but there's a difference between the coupon that the investor offers you and the yield in the market at the time. That results in a discount and premium on the bonds, which is a little more complicated, but overall, the benefit is that you're going to get a lower interest rate going to the publicly offered market. The other option is, and this is only of Valons with a term, with a shorter term, typically you can do something that's called a private placement, where you still competitively bid, but you just put together a couple-of-page document regarding the attributes of the transaction, it's not a whole disclosure document, and you send that out to commercial banks, like Bank of America, Wells Fargo, who are interested in purchasing municipal bonds. You're not required to get a rating, and the bond term needs to be typically less, 10 years or less. Some banks will go out longer if they have a relationship with an entity, but never longer than 15 years. And they will go out longer, the problem is they won't give you a fixed interest rate. So you'll have the first 10 years fixed, and then you'll have the years after that without a fixed rate in that private placement scenario. So there's a little difference between that and a publicly offered bond, where you'd have, you know, the rate over the whole term. You don't need a disclosure council, so you save about $30,000 there, you don't need ratings, you save about $30,000 there, and then you don't have to pay an underwriting fee on the bonds, which is usually, that's how you get to that 1%. You don't know what, the underwriting fee is probably the biggest fee that you would pay when you do a bond issue. So all of those cost savings are beneficial. If you had a bond that you could get the bank to give you a bid on a fixed rate over the, you know, if it was, you know, I would say 15 years or less, you can get a fixed rate. The difference there is you get one rate for every maturity, so the bank's going to say, you know, yes, we want to buy this, we'll buy these bonds, they're 12-year bonds, we'll give you a rate of 2.25%. It's the flat, you don't take advantage of the yield curve, basically pay the same rate over the life of the bonds. Typically, if you can do it, the bank loan way is easier on staff time, it's easier on, it's lower from a cost basis, but overall, it's actually, but not everyone could take advantage of that. And the problem is there are not many banks, as there are investment banks that are interested in publicly offered bonds, so you don't have as broad of an audience, you may not get the best rate. But overall, the costs are lower, and you will still pay a very low interest rate, it's just that we need to be able to go out and make those calls and figure out who's interested, and do that ahead of time, before we can make a decision on which method to go. But typically, the privately placement way is the cheaper, easier way to go.
Thank you for that. Another question that I have for you. Could we go forward, could the council have the option to go forward with the refinancing and get to a point where we actually know, both private and public, what the bids come in, so that the council could ultimately decide at that point, well, even though it might be a little bit more expensive, but because of the terms that we get on, say, a private placement, that we prefer the private placement?
Yeah, so we could do that, we just won't know anything definitive, because in order to get to the public market, you'd have to do the rating process, the disclosure process, and spend all that money before you got there. But I could go out and talk to banks, see who might be interested, get an indication, they're happy to give an indication on rate, and then I can compare that to the publicly offered bond issue and present that at a later time. But yes, I can, but it won't be, it won't be exact, because we can't, you know, if you're not going to go the, if you're going to spend all the money, then you might as well go the public method.
Sure. All right, so when you say spend all the money, obviously, it's all that cost associated, just like buying a home, you know, you got to do the interest points and all these other things, and before you know it, it's several thousand dollars.
That's right.
Okay. So one last question. So the acreage that the council mentioned that is potentially up for sale, actually it's going to go out to market, or the RFP will go out in October. There was an appraisal done within the last year or so, came in at $233,000 an acre, so approximately somewhere in the range of $10 million. So if it did sell at that rate, at $10 million, and that money does come in, at any time after a, you know, we go forward at the council, you know, by policy wants us to go ahead and refinance, then those $10 million could be used to lower the principal balance of the loan, if the conditions are written in such a way that says that we're allowed to do that?
That's correct, you can do that.
Okay. That's all the questions I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Or from staff?
Oh, yeah. The question is, on that $750,000 from the capital improvement fund, is that only applicable to the Series 2006 bonds? Or would that be transferable to a new bond issue?
That should be transferable to any debt.
To any debt? No?
We did affiliate with the raw water line.
Okay, so the refunding of the 2006, the Series 2006 bonds would continue to be related to the raw water line, and so therefore would qualify. Thank you.
So Mayor and Council, at this point, and I'll look to my finance director, but I believe that city staff would like to make a recommendation in support of moving forward refinancing, Ms. Finance Director?
In our opinion, you want to take the most savings you can get, and that would be shortening the term of the bond, and having maybe a slightly higher payment each year for, like, the next 10 years, but then it would drop. And there's not even a surety that that will be higher, because based on what the rates have been doing in the market, we may end up still paying less, but then shortening the bonds by four years, which is a nice, a nice thing to do. And then in addition to that, in my opinion, if we do the private placement, and we don't know what the market is for that, but I think the market placement would be also a good thing for the city to do, even if the rates are slightly higher, we have more flexibility when it comes to selling land and then wanting to pay down that debt. So in my opinion, you would go with the shortening, the bond payment, so you would cut out those last four years, and hope that the current market allows us to still lower those annual payments. And in addition to that, being able to do a private placement would be my favorite thing, because then you save all the money on the issuance, and you have more flexibility when you do sell that land to say, okay, we want to put X amount of dollars, it's not, it's not that, it's not that difficult to do if it's with one bank. That's my opinion.
Any questions or comments?
I have a question for our finance director. So if we were to incur another debt, say, you know, we have a lot of things going up, like the swimming pool, or, you know, we're still looking at our utility rates, so to say there's another debt, how would this affect this bond? Would it just be a completely separate bond, and we would deal with that separately at a different account, or how would that be handled?
Well, this debt is a utility debt.
Right.
And if we did a pool bond, for instance, that's a general fund debt, so the city has no general fund debt. So it would be totally different. And when we do sell that land, we could use, that could be some of the decisions that the council makes when those land sales happen, because you could say, okay, we're, you know, we have a good rate now on the utility debt, we do want to pay some of that down, but we also want to do this pool, so that money could be used, you know, for two different purposes. You don't have to put all the land sale money on the utility debt. It would, you know, be an option for the council to review and talk about.
So if we determine that, right now, our rates are kind of suspended in the utilities, so if we decide not to continue with raise, with the next pay raise rate, how does our utility fund look like to be able to handle these payments for the next 10 years?
Well, that's already factored in, so there's already...
It's already factored in, as it is current, not with those, not expecting those rates.
Right, so that small increase would be able to be handled by the water fund.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Councilman Harhey, any questions or comments?
Well, my only comment would be is, at the end of the day, that when you just, what the net savings will be in terms of the interest when you deduct all the fees, obviously with the higher option, there would be a substantial amount of savings. But I'm concerned that with the other option that was described, that even at the one point, that it makes the whole enterprise need to have a close look as to what the actual net cost of refinancing is to the city. I think all we've been talking about is the first costs and not net costs. That's my only comment now.
And just in response to that, this is Andrew Artusa from Zion's Public Finance. Again, I just wanted to clarify that the number... Again, I just wanted to clarify that the numbers I gave you as far as the savings were net of costs already, so there's already included the costs associated with doing the refinancing in those numbers.
Councilman Adams?
Yeah, so, you know, we mentioned that potentially, you know, with the way rates are going and everything, we could, if we go with option number two, we might not even be seeing an increase. It could actually still be at the same or maybe potentially done. Is the opposite potentially true then, based on the markets, that I know it might not be feasible, but is that potentially true, that instead of paying more than $100,000 per year, if we go to refinance, we could be paying a little bit more than that at the end of the day?
Yeah, I mean, it's possible, correct. I, and just the numbers you have here are based on rates that are probably a couple of weeks old, they have a cushion in them, so I'm pretty confident that if it was to sell today, it would be less than $100,000, but I don't know what it's going to be when we get to the approval step, get to that point, get to that point.
And keep in mind, Council, that we would be coming back to the council once we receive the bids back, and you would approve those prior to the actual issuance of that. Is that correct?
Depending on the method of sale, I guess, you'll have an indication when we come back, when we do the bond ordinance, to have an idea of what the market is at that particular time. It'll be much closer to the actual pricing, so we'll have a better sense of where we are in the market.
Just one question that occurred to me. Either direction we go on this, these are revenue bonds, is that correct?
So only revenue bonds, no property tax will ever be used to pay these bonds, or will be allowed to be used to pay these bonds?
Okay, and again, the reason I'm asking too is, we would not have review by the Clark County Debt Management Commission in this case?
No, these are only approval process for these particular bonds are this council.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Oh, yay.
Well, I'm never shy about using the Debt Management Commission to take a look at these things, because I think they do a pretty good job of it.
And you have a friend on that commission.
And I deserve on it, so. Thank you, sir. Any other questions from council? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and open this for public comment at this time. Anyone wishing to speak in public comment, please come forward.
Good afternoon, Greg Todd, Boulder City resident. One thing that came to mind that I'm hearing is we've got $750,000 since 2016 that is in a special account that can be utilized to take and pay off the water, raw water line bond. And so far, based upon what I'm hearing, we've got $1,005,000 in there that we have not utilized. So I don't see any rate increase occurring, because we're only talking $100,000. If we've got $750,000 a year in this account that we have not used, that will definitely cover the $100,000 surplus, that we'll never see a water rate increase, and we should see a rate decrease if that money is in there used to pay the bond properly. That's all I have.
Anyone else wishing to speak in public comment? All right, we'll go ahead and close public comment at this time. I guess the direction then is to whether we want to go ahead with having Zion look at both alternatives, we're still not choosing among the alternatives?
So Andrew Artusa, Zion Public Finance. I think it would be good to have an answer to which alternative you'd like to go with, because if we go with the first scenario where we have the same term, the bank financing is not an option, because we're not shortening the term.
Okay. You would, though, be able to give us an estimate versus the public versus the private placement?
For option two, correct. Yes, I can.
Okay.
And if you go with option one, keep in mind that you will have to pay those costs, well, when I say upfront, once, you know, the cost dealing with, you know, bond issuance, the ratings, you know, all that sort of thing, those costs, that if you go with option one, you're going to have to do upfront in order to be able to prepare the package to go out for, for the market, correct?
Correct. But if we do option two, I will be able to call different banks and see what their, you know, will you give us an interest rate for a 12-year bond? If so, what is your estimate? And I can come back to you with those, those answers.
Okay. So just for clarity purpose, option one then, is the public offering? Option two is the private placement of the loan?
Yes, I mean, I think that would be the way to look at it. I mean, the only, the only option, you know, like I said, most banks only want to go out 10 years, it's going to be able to find a bank. I know I've talked to Bank of America, they said they would go out longer than 10 years. You know, I talked to Wells Fargo, and they said they would only go seven years. So it just, you know, tells, you know, I can tell you that there are banks that are interested in something longer than 10, but definitely not the same as, term as same as option number one, so.
All right. Well, I guess it's time to make a motion then. Who would like to do so?
Okay, I have to figure out how to, how to phrase this. I'd like to move that we go ahead with the, we should go back to the original document. Well, we've received the presentation, and we go ahead with the motion to refinance the existing raw water line debt, and I, and go with option two.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion prior to taking the vote?
Mayor? Yes. I just want to clarify, option two in the presentation is to limit the term or decrease the overall term by four years. If you could clarify that under option two, do you want us to proceed forward with public placement or private placement? And private placement is what Mr. Artusa was just talking about.
And the only thing I'll clarify is that we can, I don't think we have to answer that now, I think that it gives us the flexibility to come back and give you a presentation on both options.
Thank you. Okay. Option two being the shorter length option.
Okay, any other discussion?
I just want to have, I have one question about the finances, so for our finance director. Was there money being pulled out, the 750, was that being pulled out, or is that just nothing happened at all?
That is sitting in the capital improvement fund.
It is sitting in there?
Yeah. So it could be used for capital projects. I mean, it's not like it's money that we pulled out and put in a different account. It's still sitting in the voter approved capital improvement fund.
Improvement fund, okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I have a question. I, perhaps I misunderstood, but I had thought that although workshops are permitted under the open meeting law, that one of the stipulations that there were no, with no policy to be taken, so I'm wondering if the city attorneys there can answer the question, we're talking about taking a vote, is this would be in compliance with the open meeting law?
Well, again, I think that the agenda item here is for possible direction, and that's what we're giving, but Mr. City Attorney, if you'd like to comment on that?
That's correct, Mayor. This is a special meeting of the council that has been properly agendized and noticed, and yes, you can take action.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Okay, so this is a special meeting, not just a workshop.
Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous then, thank you. And I guess we've already had our last public comment, or do we need another? You didn't put it on the agenda. All right, we will have our last public comment period. This comment period may be on any issue that you desire. Anyone wishing to speak? Ms. Barnett?
I'm who put this on the ballot, so I wanted to thank that particular council person. Thank you for stepping up and being, that we're able to refinance this and take care of business here in the proper way. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, we will close public comment, and we are adjourned. Thank you.